All right, good evening, everyone. We're ready to begin our regular meeting. It is now... Let me get the date right. It's October the 7th, 6:00 P.M. Welcome to everyone, and we thank you for your presence and your love and concern for the City of Pickens. This time, let us stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. The invocation will be led by Councilman Rogers.
Heavenly Father, our world's in a mess. Nations are rising up against nations and people against people. And it seems like things are just spiraling out of control in every way that I've ever... In ways that we haven't seen in our whole lives. And we pray for our world. We pray for the leaders in our world. We pray for wisdom and guidance and understanding. We pray for, most of all, Christ.
Yes.
That you would make yourself known to our world. That you are the Good Shepherd and the only peace that brings, passes understanding. How very much we all need you. I pray that you would be with council tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to meet again and do the city's business. And I pray that you would give us all wisdom and love for each other and guide and direct this meeting, I pray, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, everybody.
Get our attention. Again, with my comments, I just want to reiterate, I thank you all for your presence, your love and concern for Pickens. I thank you for being here and taking the time out to be here. That's one of the things that we can't get back. Once we lose time, it's gone. And anybody that's willing to share that time, it means the world, and I thank you so much. Even though in politics or dealing with concerns of the city, we may have differences of opinion, but I beg you to don't let that supersede the love that we should have for one another, regardless of what happens or what's being said or what's being done. I want to say something on a personal note. For the past three months, I've been dealing with terrible blood pressure problems. To the fact that it was almost at stroke... Well, it was at stroke level. I was just blessed to not have a stroke. Doctor couldn't find anything wrong with me, except stress. And I promised myself I'm not going to let stress kill me. Like I said earlier, we can have differences of opinion. That's no problem. But when we start getting ugly toward one another, that takes out the whole realm of what Pickens is all about. Even if I don't get my way, I still love you all. And I mean that. Stress is something that can make you start to think when you go through that, because I was going through all the symptoms and things in the hospital, and they were trying to rush and get my pressure down. And I was laying there, and I thought about it. All the stuff that we fuss and fight about and we want our way, one day ain't going to matter. My father taught me that. He was a well-renowned pastor. And it got to the stage in his life when he was dying of cancer. And I went to him, and I wanted to take the pain. And he said, "No, you can't. If I could give it to you, I wouldn't." He said, "This is my cross to bear. You're going to have yours." But I say that to say he went through all of that, the grandeur and going up to Washington and being honored and all that he went through. And I was trying to talk to him about current events while he was on a sick bed. And he waved his hand to me like that and said, "Son, I don't want to talk about that anymore. I'm trying to get to heaven." All of us are going to hit that moment one day in our lives. And it's how we treat one another is going to be how we handle those moments. I thank you for electing me as mayor. There's been people telling me that I need to resign because of the decisions I've made. Well, I'm not resigning. I got two more years. And I'm going to work to the best of my ability. And the only reason I made the decisions that I made was for the love and concern of this little town, trying to do the best I can with the time in which I have. So as we go through life, basically, not just this meeting, I want you to really reflect on that, because you never know when God is going to call you. Because I was on that hospital bed, and I knew deep down in my heart, I did all I could for what I was taught to do. Again, I thank council. I thank Tim. He's been a good worker. He's had some problems, which you all know. We've handled that as a council, but we love and support him because he's part of our community more than anything else. He lives here. And I want to say publicly that yes, he made mistakes. We all do. But I support him to move forward in the best way that we can. Now, does that give you grace forever? No. But it also lets you know that I'm not going to throw the baby out with the bathwater. We just started this journey. And I've been on council where we could not keep an administrator because of stuff like this. First little thing happened, you ready to get rid of? Thank you. That's all I have to say. Now, let us keep further. I didn't mess up, did I, Lordy? Did I say anything I wasn't supposed to say?
I'm sorry.
All right. Administrator? I'm sorry. Comments from citizens. Please forgive me. Let me get these papers together and get people here to say. Here we go. Ms. Pam Winters. Let's remember, you have five minutes, everybody, to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Cipio and council, for allowing me to speak. And thank you, Mayor Cipio, for talking about ugliness, because that's exactly what I'm here to talk about tonight. I said what I said. Screenshot this and tell it. I'm sick of this bullshittery. If you're okay with feeding a pedophile this story, you're a sick piece of expletive. You are the company you keep. Those aren't my words. They were written about me by name on social media by one of your appointed planning commission members. I'm reading them here tonight because the public deserves to know how an appointed official of this city has chosen to speak about a citizen for simply exercising their right to ask questions. It's vulgar. It's defamatory. And it's a stain on the professionalism of this city. So I ask each of you, did you know about this? If you did and stayed silent, that silence is approval. If you didn't, ask yourselves, why is this being tolerated? This attack happened right after I shared a Freedom of Information request that revealed the unauthorized budget changes. Instead of focusing on that, this planning commission member decided to attack me. That is retaliation, plain and simple. And it tells every citizen, if you challenge the status quo, you risk being targeted. And it didn't stop there. I emailed council with concerns about the annexation and development. The same member posted again, mocking me and calling residents agents of chaos and clueless. But here's the bigger question about that. How did she even know about my email? It was only sent to council and the city attorney. So who shared it and why? Because from where I stand, it looks like someone wanted her to attack again, to discredit me publicly and to discourage others from speaking out. That's not transparency. That's a breach of trust. This behavior doesn't just hurt me. It hurts every resident who thinks twice before coming here to speak. When citizens are insulted and misrepresented by city... By people tied to City Hall, the message is clear. Keep quiet or become a target. That's not democracy. That's intimidation. You have appointed this person. You have the power and the duty to act. At a minimum, there should be a public statement condemning this behavior, a review of how citizens' emails that are being shared outside of the Freedom of Information request, and real consequences for appointees who publicly defame and disparage citizens. I'm not here for sympathy. I'm here for leadership. Trust is built when leaders listen and act with fairness and not stay silent in the face of wrongdoing. When officials bully citizens and others stay silent, everyone loses faith. Pickens deserves better. The citizens deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'm going to address these folks instead of you all.
No, you're going to address council.
I'm just going to say this. Me and Mr. Mann, we attended the meeting last Thursday night for public input, something that the state mandates, and the city is finally doing it. It's been since 2012. And I was disappointed. There was eight citizens and two representing the city. Mr. McManus was there late. He just got back from Columbia.
I'm sorry you got addressed.
Okay. I'll address you both, how's that? But the penny ante is...
Wait a minute. This is for council. This time is for addressing council, please.
Well, okay, I'll continue.
I'm sorry to be interrupting, but I need to have you address us.
But everyone had a chance to be at that meeting. Yes, it was at 6:00. Yes, a lot of people didn't know about it. And I made recommendations that... A lot of folks from Pickens work in Greenville or out of town, and they can't get back by 6:00 for things. That was just a suggestion. Mr. McManus heard complaints from folks that have moved into town that are not from here about little things like the trash truck leaking fluid on the street going up their road. Penny ante stuff. We're better than that. Isaiah said that. We all get along, and we're growing. But at the same time, we're also embarrassing ourselves, arguing with each other, attacking this council. And most of you all put this council in place. I'm proud of this council. I'm proud of everybody in here. And I do know that things are getting done. And when they get done, it costs money sometimes. And yes, we need to come up with ways to raise more tax base, whether it be new businesses coming in, new homes coming in. We just have to accept it and work together. Annexation can be good. Some places, annexation is bad. But I feel like this project that you all will be discussing more and making a vote on is good for our little town. And I've got friends out of Greenville that have been looking to come towards Pickens to find... They're going to get out of their big homes and scale down to a smaller community. I welcome them. I welcome them. And I know I have friends sitting behind me that are going to disagree with me. But I do think you all will make the right decision, just like the county leaders. They've been making the right decisions. It's just, we're embarrassing ourselves, stirring up things. And this morning, another gentleman who is running for council put a post up. He immediately took it down when everyone started saying, "That's just not fair." Has no relevance whatsoever to what's going on with this administration. But if that's a platform they want to run on, so be it. But it's not the citizens of Pickens I grew up with all my life. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty. Mr. Kent Nielsen.
Mr. Mayor and esteemed council, it's been our privilege as the South Carolina State Guard to serve this city and this community.
Thank you.
We consider it an honor. I want you to know that we are here on behalf of the state. The state has sent not just any old yahoos, although we are yahoos. I might give you a little bit of background on some of these people that I have with me today. Captain McConnell is an aeronautical engineer. Lieutenant Colonel David White is prior service, former Army EOD. Lieutenant Paul Christopher is manager of the engineering department in ITAC. It's a large consulting firm, international consulting firm, with an office in Greenville. One of our members who assisted in some of the damage assessment is former 82nd Airborne. He's a nationally-known resource for SUAS, which is basically a drone and that technology for evaluating damage. I myself am a consulting engineer with over 40 years of experience, and I teach part-time at Clemson University. We are giving to you not our spare time, but our precious time, because we believe in our communities. We see the goodness of people, and we consider it a privilege to use those skills to help our fellow beings. And so we just want to say, it's been a privilege to serve you. I hope that we can develop a relationship where we can be called upon in times of emergency, and you feel comfortable with that. And we are here to serve. And really, that's all we wanted to say.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you for your service. Hold up one minute. Let me get this down to this point. We've got something to present to you, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much. Now, Administrator.
All right. Counsel, I have included in the packet that's now online a memo detailing something that we're very pleased about, a number of grants that we have received. We recently, from the Appalachian Regional Council or Regional Commission, received a $50,000 grant, which has a $50,000 match for a downtown master plan. The Appalachian Regional Council is a wonderful organization that supports communities like ours, big and small, in trying to make sure that we're maintaining our character and planning for the future. Those funds, that project, the funds run through 2027, so this will be a match that we will discuss in a future budget. But it is good to know that we've received the approval on the grant. And then we... From the Rural Infrastructure Authority, you'll recall that we invested $6 million in new pipes to improve our water system. And part of that was a $1.6 million local match, which we did file a form as they work on projects throughout the state that if any other jurisdiction had funds remaining, that we would like to avail ourselves of those funds. They did have a remainder amount of $58,000. And we submitted the paperwork and have been successful in collecting that. That would be a reimbursement of monies we've already spent as a local match. So we have confirmed that that is available for any infrastructure needs generally in the utility department. So that's good news. And again, that's $58,000 that can go to that purpose. And then the police department has done an excellent job of kind of bringing in money to support some of their needs through the body worn camera program from the South Carolina Department of Public Safety. And this particular grant award is in the amount of $20,114. That is a good amount. But Chief Beach has routinely brought in these grants that have been able to maintain our technology. So those grants are all detailed in the administrative report that is with the packet. I also want to point out that we have welcomed this week Rebecca Cockrell to our customer service staff up front. We're enjoying having her on Team Pickens, and we hope that lots of folks will get to meet her in the near future. And finally, I'll just sum up with... You made the gracious statement in the opening of the meeting. And I just want to make a brief, personal comment that I have chosen a profession where I live and work in a glass house. And I'm glad to live and work in a glass house. Everything I do, I make sure that people know it. And then if this council disagrees with it, nobody can say I hid it. I did what I did, thinking that I had some police staffers that needed something and that we had overlooked something in the budget. I believe that eventually, that would have been done anyway. But I sped along the process. And appropriately, this council did what they're supposed to do. This board of directors sat down with the chief administrative officer and threw a flag and said, "We're going to document this. We're going to tell you how we want it to work, and that's how we're going to agree to move forward." We sat here, we had a great conversation. We ended that night as friends, and we generated a document. And I have no embarrassment about that. I don't do things that I'm embarrassed of in my professional life. Sometimes they're not right. And in this case, it was determined to be inappropriate. I accept that. And I appreciate your grace and your support, which all of you have demonstrated fully to me in that process of discipline and discussion. And I look forward to continuing that relationship.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Is that... Any questions for Administrator? No questions? Okay, we're going to the finance director's report.
I'm sorry, your report. I've included numbers for the current fiscal year and an exception report for last fiscal year. Does he write out any questions on either of those?
So, Mr. Ray?
Yes, ma'am.
Mandy, the CD that expired and there's the balance of $35,883.83, I appreciate your recommendation for that to be reallocated. It covered... The CD covered the purchase of the property, but then that was the remainder, ma'am.
Correct, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to state for the record that I was not in agreement of the purchase of the iPads for council. And I understand that that was kind of done without your knowledge or approval as well. But I just want that to be on the record, that I don't feel you won't see me with an iPad, and I don't feel that that was a useful expenditure, in my opinion. And I know that that's minimal. We had talked earlier about some of the discrepancy from last year. Could you clarify a couple of those points, specifically the CWS fees?
Yes. So the CWS transition took place last fiscal year. And there was an over in the budget as we had intended to fully bring in-house water and sewer. So we budgeted for the minimal amount with CWS. But during that process, the city determined that they wanted CWS to continue handling our sewer, our wastewater treatment. So we continued to pay CWS an additional $16,000 a month, which put us over budget.
In that regard, right.
Yep.
And then can you also touch on the utility operations, power, and the utility fleet fee and how that was allocated?
Yes. Because we had CWS, there were no budgets listed for those items because, again, CWS, that was a portion of what they're... But they're amount covered. So when we brought that back in-house, we didn't have a budget for any of those, you know, power, fleet, maintenance, things like that, because that was essentially what we paid to CWS. Or what, you know?
And then in...
They handled those things.
Correct, right. And then in our current budget, those were not budgeted in the utilities?
Correct. This fiscal year, we sat down with the utility director, and he felt it would be best to, instead of budgeting a fuel line for public works and a fuel line for utility, to just combine those into one line. So that's how we've done it this year.
Thank you for going over that. Obviously, our professional fees projected right now for it that are currently budgeted, we have gone over it. And that has been because we've required more legal assistance and advice because of the issues that we're currently facing. So that makes sense. How do you feel overall about where we are currently with our budget and what's been expensed?
Well, I will tell you that Dana and I are continuing to try to identify areas where we can cut back and save because, you know, we do have some additional expense that we didn't necessarily anticipate. Our IT, we've had issues with an IT company that we've used for a few years. So we have since done away with that IT company. We have a new one coming on board. But that also entails, you know, a little additional expense because some of the equipment that we had with the previous company does not work, did not work, has not been working for years. So, you know, there are going to be things that come up from time to time. So... But we're doing our best to make sure we keep everything in order.
And do you feel like we're budgeted and projected okay right now? I know that there are certain things that fluctuate in the budget as the year goes on.
Right. I think for the most part, we're okay. There are some in the utility areas. You know, we kind of did have to guesstimate somewhat since CWS has been managing those, managing that for us. So there may be a time that we might need to go back and look and kind of true up the numbers. But I think we're okay for now.
Okay. Well, I really appreciate you. And thank you for being here and for all that you do for the city.
Mr. Mayor, if I had to ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
For Mandy. Just more of a... Kind of, I want to understand something. So when we... How... So I'm looking at our consolidated expense statement, and I see the percentage of funds used. And obviously, we're only partway through the year. Is there a better way for me to understand how we look compared to how we're going to be at the end of the budget year versus what we're looking at right here? I mean, you understand what I'm saying? So like, for instance, you've got categories where, hey, we're 15% used or we're 93% used. So you can see, when you look at where we are in the year of this statement, 84 days or 88 days into the... 84 days into the year. And you're thinking, okay, that's 23% of... So I'm just trying to figure out, how do I... Because this has been a plaguing problem, and I don't know that there's a good solution. I'm just asking a question because it's been on my mind.
And the percentages can be deceiving because some expenses are one-time experience. Some may be quarterly. So, you know, if it looks like we're over budget in one line item, it may not be that, you know, we'll have maybe one or two invoiced, if any more at all, for that line. So I can definitely research and see if I can come up with a way to... I can definitely research and see if I can come up with a way to, you know.
I mean, is, cause there's any way to project some expenses that, you know, monthly through the year, you know. Hey, we're going to continue to have these expenses, so, so that when we look at the things, you can say, okay, yeah, we're, we're at fifty-eight percent. But you can anticipate, we might be a hundred and thirty percent by the end of the year, something like that.
A little better, um, monthly, semi-monthly.
Thank you, and, and.
I think, um, are you still, did I say?
Well, you go ahead, I have one more question.
Okay, I just think with the questions that we're having and the concerns that have been brought up. I think a work session with just dealing with the financial situation is in order. For us to move forward, this is the first quarter of our fiscal year. And it'd be, the timing is perfect. We can get together and our next work session, if it's okay and agreeable by council. That we will dedicate that solely to the financial situation and where we're at. So we can get a real good bearing of what's needed. As we move forward, as we make decisions. Cause we can't make an uninformed decision. And I think the best thing to do is to sit down and really fine-tooth comb this. And, and then we can be able to answer a lot of questions where we're at. Is everybody in agreement today for our next work session?
When, when would that be? Next, when would that be?
That would be a special call meeting. I think we can have a special call meeting for that purpose alone. Uh, when would you like to do that?
On a day.
Do it a day?
On, on a day, just a day.
Not a night.
We have the meeting.
Um, at the twentieth, I was saying we had, we scheduled a meeting for the twentieth. I sent out um emails that that would be a, a regular meeting also to finish up. That would not be a work session.
I saw the email about having potentially a meeting next week.
No, I, I had to add to that, I had, because I'm going to be out of town for training. Uh, me and Floyd are also going to be out of town for training, so, and also, uh, Councilman Rogers will be out of town, so it won't be a corn.
So we, so we just have?
Rock, Rivers, please forgive me. Yeah, there you go, thank you.
So we have the meeting.
The twentieth, that's what I sent out, that, that could be a better meeting for us to meet.
Okay, gotcha. And then are we still meeting on the twenty-seventh?
We, that's where we can do that for a work session. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Can I tentatively say that right there?
Tentatively?
Yes.
Could you make, okay. What's it pencil that in?
In front of me right now, I was, I hate to commit to something I don't.
Okay, I'll tell you what, just pencil that in, the twenty-seventh, that we keep it just like it is. We just have that extra meeting on the twentieth. Uh, and the work session will be the twenty-seventh.
I don't see a problem, I just don't want to say.
Commit right now that you don't know.
Right.
And Mr. Mayor, that, that work session, the twenty-seventh, and is strictly at this point to be financially related.
That's totally, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, nothing else.
Alright.
Is that okay? Um, Miss Hens?
Perfect.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah, oh, he was in, wait.
Well, I, my question is kind of minor and it can wait till the twenty-seventh, to be honest, okay?
Alright.
So, um, I just want to, you know, the folks in the city to know that I, Mandy and I sat down and I, we went page by page. You know what I mean, on every line item. And I don't want you to think we're not looking at this, we are. I know that, you know, some, some of you folks have written me and I, and I'm listening and I understand. Um, about, you know, some of the spending and so what I, I, it's been, I asked Mandy today. If, because she was explaining these line items to me, you know what I mean, as what, what these expenses were and why some of them are so high. And there's lots of them that are, anything that's sixty percent or over, I just flagged it and said, what is this? Why, you know, and so some of them were, you know, she found, oh, that was put in the wrong category a couple of times, you know what I mean? And, you know, and they're going to make journal entries, you know what I mean? Other things, um, were, you know, a one-time plumbing repair fee, like downstairs, I think we, council wanted that. I wanted that toilet fixed, so we had that done and so that put them in sixty percent. Anyway, so what I asked Mandy to do is, um, and, and if council thinks it's a good idea that. Anything that, that she finds, let's say, we come up with a number, but, you know, it's going to change as the year goes through. But I thought anything like fifty to sixty percent and up, that she would give us a description as to what, what is happening. If there's thirty of them, there's thirty of them. But she will say, oh, wrong journal entry, oh, you know what I mean, that is a one-time expense. A lot of these are one-time expenses, you know what I mean? Um, oh, uh, you know, uh, I, you know, some of the office supplies, she's taking the office supplies in-house. And she's managing all the office supplies now, you know, for the whole city. So she gave me descriptions, you know what I mean, on, on, on the whole, all of these line items. So I think it would be helpful for us to do that, you know what I mean, to get that report along with, you know what I mean, our actual numbers. Where we get, you know what I mean, that she can describe why are these running so high, you know what I mean, up against our budget numbers? And then if, we still have questions, we can.
So you're, you're in agreeable to fine-tooth it, like I said earlier, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I just want to offer a brief plug to Mandy and Dana, who are doing a fine job.
Yeah.
Um, keeping track of the accounting, catching up on the audits, which we will be caught up this year. Um, and I look forward to this work session because, um, I also want to applaud, applaud this council. Because typically in, in local government and government accounting, it's kind of a year-long horizon. Everybody says, what's your budget bucket in day one, day three hundred and sixty-four, are you under that number? This council is, and in part in reaction to public comment, is looking so much more in a granular fashion. And I applaud you for that, to say, how are we spending it month by month? Um, and I think during this work session, we'll realize, we can look at all the things where, you know, the gas budget for cutting grass is really high in May and June. But it's really low in November and December. Um, so financially, we're in great shape. We've got reserves against both our general fund and our utility fund of twenty-four percent and sixteen percent. So these are all great questions as we try all the time to revise, refine our budget plan, which is always a little bit over, a little bit under. Um, but I think this council is going to do a super job, once we get together and do all that, of really refining what we're doing and seeing if we need to adjust.
Want to finish?
Um, I had one other, I, I had asked Mandy about this and I just wanted to bring it up to council so we would remember to talk about this. When we, four of us went over to the Parks and Recreation and we walked around with Jonathan. You know, we saw the air conditioners were at like fifty percent, you know what I mean? And I, and I, you know, I had asked Mandy about that and, you know, there, of course, we didn't budget for that. And I, I just think we need to start thinking about that. And Jonathan gave us an idea, and I don't know, we can talk about this during our meeting. So I went to try and do about, maybe charging a, a fee. I think we were, we were told like easily in other places are charging a fee that we're not charging. And maybe we could charge a minimal fee to, uh, to some of our. People that are using our facilities, you know what I mean? And maybe we could, you know, to pay for the air, that, that's probably going to be a million dollars, you know what I mean? I, I don't know, but to tear out the walls and replace the air conditioner, two air conditioners, it's going to be a lot of money. And, and they can't use the facilities without those in there, you know what I mean? So I can, you said it could be tomorrow and it could be maybe not, you know what I mean? It could be a month or two or a year, we don't know, but we need to start planning for that. So I, I was just thinking council could start maybe, you know, some type of minimal fee that we could start, you know what I mean? Um, to help us start saving for, you know what I mean, improving our, you know, our, our facilities, you know? And, and laying up for our air conditioners and other things that need to be done. Well, that, that's all I want, thank you for spending the time with me to go over the line items. I promised her that I would not embarrass her in front of the council, that I would come and, you know, and I, because I usually ask a lot of questions. And she was very helpful and so we got a lot of it straightened out, thank you.
Your line.
Thank you so much, thank you, man, for everything you do. All right. Now we're ready for the approval of meeting minutes for August the eleventh, regular meeting. August the twenty-fifth, work session. September the eighth, regular meeting. And September the seventeenth, special call. Can I have a motion to?
Mr.
What?
Sorry, it was a little. Uh, Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the meetings from the August eleventh regular meeting, the August twenty-fifth work session, the September eighth regular meeting. And the September seventeenth special call meeting.
I second the motion.
It's been properly moved in second, are you ready for question? All in favor, raise your right hand.
You didn't have any edits?
I actually did not have any edits this time.
Uh, it's unanimous.
I had a lot of highlights, but that was just so I could go back and complain about something later, so.
All right, number eight. Approval of resolution number twenty twenty-five R two of the City of Pickens, South Carolina. Expressing gratitude to the South Carolina State Guard for their assistance following Hurricane Helene. Administrator, you got something you want to add to?
Yes, sir, just a, a brief introduction and we've met some of the gentlemen here. But, um, I was interested in the history of the South Carolina State Guard, not the National Guard. But the State Guard, um, has safeguarded the state of South Carolina since sixteen seventy, this is from their website. Starting with the Charleston militia, protecting against pirates, invaders and Native American raids in seventeen seventy-five. And the First Provincial Congress in Charleston formed a committee of safety to oversee the province's military. Urging all inhabitants to train in arms and swiftly organizing um militia units across the colony. During the revolution, leaders like Francis Marion, Tom, Thomas Sumter and Andrew Pickens. Led engagements with the British, the South Carolina militia played key roles in taking Florida from Spain in the early eighteen hundreds. Congratulations, gentlemen, and contributed to the conflicts like the War of eighteen twelve and the Mexican War. Since twenty fifteen, this organization has done an amazing job being more organized around uh emergency services and helping in recovery efforts. Um, they've done a lot in post hurricane Joaquin, uh Harvey, Matthew and now Helene. Mr. Mayor, we're pleased to offer the State Guard thanks for their help to the City of Pickens.
Thank you so much. It was good to hear that history, now I feel even more proud of what you're a part of. Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash R two. A resolution of the City of Pickens, South Carolina, expressing gratitude to the South Carolina State Guard for their assistance following Hurricane Helene. Whereas on September the twenty-sixth, Hurricane Helene brought historic flooding and widespread destruction to the City of Pickens and surrounding upstate communities. And whereas the South Carolina State Guard promptly responded to our city's request for assistance with personnel, equipment, logistic support. That provides essential to the recovery and the reconstruction of damages resulting from Hurricane Helene. And the overall well-being of the citizens of Pickens. And whereas the assistance of the guard included the full assessment of all facilities. To assist with scoping projects within the FEMA Public Assistance Program. And whereas the dedication, professionalism and service demonstrated by the South Carolina State Guard reflect the highest traditions of service. And provide knowledge, assistance and resources to our community in its time of need. Whereas by, by and through its service, the citizens of Pickens, South Carolina State Guard have tangible and meaningful evidence. That it remains trained and ready to serve the citizens of the City of Pickens as well as the state of South Carolina. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and city council of the City of Pickens, South Carolina. That we hereby extend, extend our deepest appreciation and sincere gratitude to the South Carolina State Guard. For their invaluable service, unwavering commitment to the recovery and the rebuilding of our community for the people of Pickens. It be further resolved that a copy of the resolution be presented to the South Carolina State Guard as a permanent expression. Of the City of Pickens' recognition and thanks adopted this seventh day of October twenty twenty-five. With that being said, do I have a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five R dash two?
I made a motion. Mr. Mayor, that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash R dash two.
I have a second.
Mr. Mayor, I will second the resolution.
Thank you, it's been moved and properly second, are you ready for question? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, thank you so much. And I am bold, county administrator.
Thank you, sir.
Back as part of that same state.
He's in camouflage.
But he's, probably that he's camouflage, but we want to thank you too, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
God bless y'all. Let me give you your wrist. Come on.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, appreciate it, we already took our pictures. Thank you.
That was nice.
Okay, number nine, first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh six, amending the business license ordinance. The City of Pickens to update the class schedule as required by Act one seventy-six of twenty twenty. Financial director. Help us with this, give us six, please.
Act one seventy-six is, um, it requires each municipality uh to adopt by ordinance the latest standardized um business license class schedule. As recommended by the Municipal Association. Um, the class schedule basically categorizes the different businesses based on their activities. Um, and that's um how we determine what the licensing fee is.
Okay. Would you like to add anything to that?
It's done every two years.
Every two years? Okay. Can I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt on first reading ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash zero six. Amending the business license ordinance of the City of Pickens to update the class schedule as required by Act one seventy-six of twenty twenty.
Okay.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, are they ready for question? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, so is them.
Mr. Mayor, will this come up again at the next meeting for second reading?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
First reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nine to amend chapters five, building and building regulations of the City of Pickens, South Carolina. To provide for the special property tax assessment authorized by section four dash nine dash one ninety-five. And made applicable to municipalities by section five dash twenty-one dash one forty of the South Carolina Code of Laws. As to real property which qualifies as rehabilitated historic property and other matters related thereto. Administrator?
Mr. Mayor, we've talked about this with council several times for at least the last decade, maybe a little bit more. Uh, many municipalities in the state of South Carolina and counties, in fact, have used the Bailey Bill. Um, to provide incentives for taking uh historic buildings and encouraging investment in them. Uh, this uh ordinance would allow for those property tax incentives. Which are extended, extended to historic properties um for their preservation. And essentially, the mechanism that. And essentially, the mechanism that you used is in our next item on the agenda, we'll create a historic uh, not a district, but a uh.
Criteria.
Right, the criteria for a um, historic designation for individual uh, properties uh, which makes this work. And then when people come in and say, I would like to rehabilitate my building, council and our boards and commissions look at that, they are required to invest at least twenty percent. Often there is much more investment, uh, twenty percent of the uh, fair market value of the property to improve it. There are rules and regulations that they have to maintain uh, the historic nature of the property. They can't tear it down and just change it into something else. Um, and then the result is that the city then has the power to inform the uh, county auditor and assessor that that property owner now enjoys a freeze on their pre-development uh, assessment on that property. So if you get a building that's falling in and it's assessed at ten dollars and then you put a hundred thousand dollars into it, it stays assessed at that lower figure uh, for ten years. And that's the benefit that they receive. This applies not just. But also to county and school districts as well. So that is a significant benefit to the property.
Is it time to have a motion from the first reading?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the motion that we adopt the first reading ordinance number twenty-two-five dash zero-nine. An ordinance to amend chapter five, building regulations of the city of Pickens, South Carolina, to provide special property tax assessments authorized by section four dash nine dash one ninety-five and made applicable to communities by section five dash twenty-one dash one forty of the South Carolina Code of Law, which is to real property which qualifies as rehabilitated historic property and other matters related thereto.
It's been properly moved in second, I'm ready for question.
I have a question. When you read this, I have to read it whole and like that.
I didn't do that and I got stolen. He told me how to do it right.
He gave you a side eye, right?
Yeah, that's, that's almost it, this thing. Okay, uh, it's been properly moved in second, a question? Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, before Mr. Regmanis can say it, I've read this and I have noted several uh, script errors errors um, which we will attend to, they're grammatical and otherwise, but our editor um, reached to it.
I've only highlighted a few things.
Yes, yes. So make the motion with the corrections made.
My, my motion is that there will be additional script error corrections in the second reading.
All right. All in favor, raise your right hand. Now, first reading of ordinance number ten twenty-five dash eleven, authorizing execution and delivery of a development agreement by and between the city of Pickens, South Carolina and BRD land and investment with respect to certain. Thank you. First, first reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five dash thirteen, to amend chapter five, building and building regulations of the city of Pickens, South Carolina, to add historic designation.
Mr. Mayor, I make a, uh, sorry.
No, you, yeah.
I make a motion.
I think everybody understands.
I make a motion that we approve the first reading ordinance number twenty-two-five dash thirteen to amend chapter five, building and building regulations of the city of Pickens, South Carolina, to add historic designation.
A second. It's been properly moved in second, I'm ready for question.
Just for the common knowledge, this categorizes, should someone be approved for this historical Pickens category? And that does not mean that you are on the national register of historic cases.
Absolutely not. A lot of people do not want to be on that.
Correct, and that's why I wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you. It can be moved and seconded on the basis of questions. All in favor, raise your right hand. Now, number two. Yes, sir.
Mr. Rogers?
Did you? Yes, I didn't use it, I didn't use it. Turn your hearing.
First reading of the board number twenty-two-five dash eleven, authorizing execution and delivery of a development agreement by and between the city of Pickens, South Carolina and BRD land and investment with respect to certain investment. It's made in the city's authorizing execution and delivery of a development agreement and providing for other related matters. Attorney, would you give us a minute?
Sure, but council has a board of decision or a development agreement that we have negotiated with the developer, BRD land and investment, to govern the development of the Wolf Creek tracks. And I can summarize the agreement for council if you need me to and highlight a few of the points. I think that's important for council to understand.
Turn the page.
Okay, thank you.
First thing that's important from the development agreement is this, recently council passed the plan development district zoning ordinance. This development agreement goes hand in hand with PDD zoning ordinance. And in addition to the regulations that are required in the development agreement, the developer, if approved, also be controlled and this development be regulated by the plan development district, which gives this council considerable oversight on how the development is going to look and how it's going to proceed. Workmate council understand that the development agreement is not the end all be all, how the development is going to proceed. It also goes, the PDD zoning ordinance is also going to govern it down the road as the development proceeds. There is a term in the development for five years for the development to complete the development with one extension available for additional five years if the developer is not in default and diligently pursue the development. The development must comply with the site plan. We received a revised site plan today showing a hundred and forty-two units on the site. Development also must comply with the statement of intent, final development plan, the city's land development regulations and all building environmental regulations. The statement of intent and the final development plan will also be part of the plan development district. Those will be subject to council approval. The developer has agreed to amend an investment of six million dollars as part of this development. And the development agreement assigns what constitutes the six million dollars contributed by the developer towards development, agreement, development of the project. Development prize of the developer will undergo pretty strict scrutiny on how the construction will occur, such as maintaining cleanliness to the site, repairing any damaged utilities, parking for construction, material laydown area in coordination with the local residents, surrounding residents regarding voids and after-hours construction. Additionally, as part of the plan development district, there will also be development schedules as approved by council and the developer. This development schedule will determine how the development will proceed. The developer must comply with the development schedule as approved by council. The developer is going to be granted vested rights in the development, which is a, a right granted by state law. So the developer for a period of, as approved by the agreement for five years, has the right to, to do this project for the duration of the terms set forth in the agreement. He has that right, or the developer has that right under state law to complete the development as approved by this council. Developer has agreed that all the direct costs, including all public infrastructure, are the developer's responsibility, not responsibility of the city. All public roads will be constructed according to city road standards and be, assuming they do pass the city's road standards, that will be accepted and adopted by the city. Stormwater system, the drainage systems must all comply with all city ordinances. The city will be providing solid waste recycling as recite, as, as is customary for all city residents, police protection, fire and EMS. And uh, school, the, the development will be, will be zoned for Pickens County School District. The developers also agreed to make intersection improvements in two separate entrances to the development, all of which will be approved by South Carolina Department of Transportation. The developer will be in default under this agreement if he does not continuously and diligently proceed with the project. If the work stops for more than six months, four consecutive months, developer shall be in default. Developer has the right to cure his default, otherwise he would be in default and not be able, able to the ability to proceed with the development under the development agreement. Developers also agree to provide PNP bonds, performance and payment bonds. It's very important for this council. If the developer starts the project and doesn't finish for public infrastructure, the city will be allowed to call the bond and the bond will allow the city to use the bond money to complete the public infrastructure. So the city always has to guard against a developer not being able to proceed economically for a variety of reasons, but the PNP bonds, the city has a backup to allow the city to finish what work has been started and to complete public infrastructure. The agreement provides for uh, strict insurance requirements, which protects the city as well as an identification provision where the city protects the city in the event of developer fail. They also comply with the development agreement or fails or any act, negligent acts the developer performs under the agreement and any environmental matters. Uh, so mayor and council, that's a summary of the development agreements and the material terms.
Do you have any questions, please?
I have a question, just to clarify, the um, the unit cap has been settled at one thirty-two.
As stated earlier this afternoon, we received a revised site plan from the developer showing a hundred and forty-two units, have a copy with me. And Mr. Ryan also has a copy. And the other exhibit was the boundary survey, which I think you already have. And the developed exhibit, see the written development schedule is not going to be ready until we get it through the plan development.
Mr. Mayor, um, Mr. City Attorney, um, that plan, the uh, site plan that is delivered to us today, a hundred and forty-two rooms, um, we got it at the electric hour, but part of the reason for that is that the developer has met with the neighbors, um, I can't remember the street across the way.
Here.
Um, and they have a request into DOT and their preference is to move that entrance so it does not connect as drawn in that plan um, to the first corner of the property. They've gotten some good feedback from DOT, but they haven't gotten approval. So they, they are still pursuing that, but this, uh, they didn't want to change their site plan that they delivered today, not having that answer. But they wanted to make sure that everyone's in a view on, on behalf of the community and the request of council and neighbors, that they are doing due diligence to try to get that enough.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. So developer also agreed, I just want to make sure that we believe that around twenty-six hundred foot of agents water line extension to, to whip the city's water line system up to um, the development would be paid for by the developer and not, not be expected to be reversed by the city.
That's, that's part of the public infrastructure. And I believe when you asked me before the meeting.
Fair.
And what I can get with developer's council to, we can revise the agreement to set forth exactly what the public infrastructure is. So there's no question about what developers agreed to do as part of that cost that they're bearing as part of the project.
And I asked you that in the public, because those questions that come up to me and I just want to make sure. Clarify to the folks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just have another question and I believe that this has been addressed, I did bring it up to the administrator earlier, but in the ordinance in the packet on page one, number two, the wording about the mayor and the city administrator are each acting on or in concert authorized to take other actions. Have we reworded it?
My, my proposed rewording to that, in that, in that language is not to try to give the mayor, city administrator an additional authority, it was just to, for flexibility purposes. But what I would propose, paragraph one to say is the development agreement is approved and is incorporated by reference to this ordinance as a, set forth fully in the ordinance body and the mayor or the city administrators authorized to execute the same. So that can keep simplifying it, that they, whatever you approve, you're giving them the authority to execute on behalf of the city.
Okay, yeah.
In other words, we will not do anything without.
Yeah, okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
I will not do any. Yes, any other questions?
I have a concern, whether this ordinance provide.
The approval of investors.
And authority of the mayor or the city administrator to sign off on that pre-approved agreement. That's a great job.
Correct.
Oh, you're repeating the most?
Remember this council.
I have a question. Yes, sir. So it says cap at one thirty-two. So that number of that. It's cap, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five dash eleven, authorizing the execution and the delivery of a development agreement by and between the city of Pickens, South Carolina and BRD land and investment with respect to certain investments made in the city, authorizing the execution and delivery of the development agreement and providing for other related matters.
It's been properly moved in second, now we have a quick question. In other words, all in favor, raise your right hand. Both yes? No, I thought this is first. Yes. Okay, number thirteen, first reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five dash twelve, two thousand classification of certain property located on the Wolf Creek Roman Parso number four, one, eight, zero, dash, zero, zero, dash, four, six, dash, one, one, zero, nine, owned by people holder trustee of, trustee FBO, people holder created under the entered co-owner, rightful trust dated November the eighth, twenty oh-six, to the planned development zone. It might just turn.
Well, yeah, the, the title owner is, is linked to the, the trust, trustee owns the property, so that's what I was saying. But he, Mr. Holder on behalf of this trust, this trustee, applied for the city to rezone this property under the plan development district. The ordinance itself outlines that this is, he also petitioned proper, city of Pickens to annex the property via the one hundred percent, and that, that annexation ordinance, as you know, has received first reading approval but not second. The zoning ordinance is going to be if approved this evening, we proceed along with the annexation ordinance as second reading. The annexation of this property must occur before you rezone it, but we can do it at the same meeting. So if, when in the event, when you get to a point of adding second reading on annexation ordinance, you would do that first and then you would have second reading of this zoning ordinance to the planned development agreement. I specified in the ordinance that the property is also subject to the development agreement. I wanted to, all that to be cross reference. So there's no confusion as to western government this particular property. And the planning commission did review the request for zoning on September twenty-four for major representation for a approval of planned development district. So based on that, uh the findings in the ordinance, the ordinance is read that the under your approval that property would be rezoned, not rezoned, it will be adopt a new zoning that's outside of city limits to plan development district.
So before. I have questions.
Let's make the motion. Yeah, we have, yeah, let's do it.
The motion, first reading.
Mr. Mayor, I will add a motion that we adopt the number twenty twenty-five dash two. The ordinance, I know it's created, is the ordinance to establish a zoning classification of planned development district be the property located on Wolf Creek School Road owned by Dean Dean Holder, trustee of trustee FBO Dean Dean Holder created under the anchor of held a revocable trust, VA dated November eighth, two thousand and six.
Second.
It's been properly moved to second, I'll be ready for any questions.
I have a question, the exhibits, you said the exhibits, the latest copy, do we have those? I didn't see that. Maybe I just missed the schedule.
You're looking at a higher schedule exhibits for the developer.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
The exhibits for this ordinance would be the providing a legal description of property, a map of the property and the planning permission.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, my bad. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. We got, you're clear. Okay, any other question? No questions, all in favor, raise your right hand. The poses four to one. Okay, request for building out the knowledge for the Appalachian Folk Festival. This is right on.
Mr. Mayor, uh thank you guys for letting me speak on behalf of the great Pickens Chamber of Commerce. We started the Appalachian Folk Festival in twenty twenty-three and it was our first year was very successful and the city uh did give us five thousand dollars our first year to help pay for the bands and the other associated costs. Last year, we were fortunate enough in uh year two not to have to get or ask for additional funding as we had enough in sponsorships. This year, uh we did have sponsorships, but we need additional money to cover some band expenses. Uh, we got A X money from, I applied and received A X money from accounting and that allows us to do the advertising, doesn't allow for uh bands, doesn't allow for sound and lighting and those things. So uh we partnered this year uh with Holly Springs Center and Hey Good Mill. And this year, uh we're gonna have it instead of on Main Street where we uh do have a lot of congestion. And I do for those two days, October twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, we're gonna be doing it at Hey Good Mill this year. Uh, we're really excited, we've got a lot of extra stuff we're getting out of it. If you've been to Hey Good Mill, you know it's a great Appalachian folk arts center. And this year, uh we're actually, we're offering camping for the first time and we've already had a ton of people sign up to do camping. Um, primitive camping is not for me, uh actually not for my wife, so uh it's not for me either. But uh a lot of people like that, so uh that's what we're asking for to help uh offset some of the costs of the bands.
Where will the bands be performing?
In the brand new Heritage Pavilion, uh you guys seen the pavilion?
Yes.
It is.
Beautiful.
Uh, it's, so we're gonna do, actually, everything's gonna be done inside of the pavilion from the from the bands. And we start Friday night, there'll be a kickoff band that night, I think, actually, I think we've got two. And then the next day, it starts at eleven o'clock and it goes to seven. And we've got bands throughout the day performing, um we've got, and then of course this uh vendors. Right now, we have about forty-five or so vendors uh signed up. We usually always see a big push toward the closer we get to the event when uh vendors really start coming out of the workout. I got noticed while I go, we got vendors signed up while I go while we were sitting in here. So I'm excited, it's and it's gonna be artisan vendors, it's not um, nothing wrong with selling mirkay or uh paparazzi, but uh it's gonna actually be handmade items that people are excited about. And we got, our first year, we had about uh four hundred people attend. This past year, we had a little over eighteen hundred and we expect that to be a much uh greater number this year too.
Is that? Thank you, I didn't. So is there like a mission charge?
There is not.
Okay. Free of charge.
Free of charge.
Unless your name is Councilman Rogers.
Unless it's Councilman Rogers, and then in which case it was him on a golf cart or something, so. Yes.
Well, two questions, will there be uh will they be providing their own police, I mean, if we're gonna have campers there, are they gonna provide their own or is that something the city will provide?
Uh, it's him.
And there be alcohol?
Yeah, great, great questions, uh we talked with Tommy Blankenship yesterday, he's approved the uh alcohol permit for the facility and uh he's he's all excited, we had to get him all the stats too, so that he know what what he's got, um he usually had a big sixteen thousand people event the other day and he uh he got a lot of feedback on that, so uh he had a lot of interesting questions that he should ask and uh he said, great. So we're, and we haven't had any problems in the last two years that we've had it, so and we don't anticipate any this year.
But the policing, they will provide their own?
It can't be questioned, it can't be questioned.
County will do, okay, county will do, okay.
I just have a question from our finance director, the, we had ten or fifteen thousand allocated budgeted for um sponsorship and that's right.
Well, actually, this um would qualify for hospitality funds and we have the community festival budget. It has plenty of availability.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask that question again. Mandy, are you saying that this funds could be incorporated into our existing budget without changing our budget?
Yes.
Can I have a question?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the price for four thousand dollars for the Appalachian Folk Festival. I've attended it over years with my family, I think it's a wonderful event. I'm excited that we're partnering with Hey Good Mill and the history that serves that and it will be beautiful in the year.
Is that good? It's been properly moved to second. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I only have a question, but I'm 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 pleased that the festival has been very successful and for having to move the venue for that reason. I'm disappointed that it's having to move.
Agreed.
But I think it can be a great partnership between city and county and chamber to have a regional festival that will be appealing to not just folks here in the upstairs and all over the country. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, yes.
I second that.
Any other comments, questions? No other questions, all in favor, raise your right hand. Here she ends. Thank you. Thank you. Approval of mayor memoranda of agreement between Pickens and South Carolina Department of Transportation. Probably between South Carolina Department of Transportation and the city. In the, for the, on behalf of the Department of Transportation, in the noted because of pension category, um the county and DOT stepped up and in Pickens County said, we are going to take care of all of your clean debris and you don't have to fund it, you don't have to worry about it, we'll handle it. And they did, then as we've been going through this consistent process of trying to provide FEMA uh all of the paperwork they desire related to our efforts, they came back to the county and DOT and said, did the city ask you to do it, did you get assigned a duty? Um, they did not, we did not, but they did the work. So now they have asked us to please, please sign this thing that says we're gonna clean up your debris a year ago um so that we can get our funding. Um, it's pretty routine and housekeeping, but uh they need us a big favor and and now they they're desperate to get the paperwork so they can get their reimbursement.
Yes. Can I ask one quick question before we make a motion? This is a written writing, so we're not.
Right.
And so is this gonna be backdated?
No, they they requested a female request that it be dated the date of and recognizes that they did the work of that, they, I mean, they want to be forthright about it, but they want it written on place that they did it.
It's just a housekeeping.
Right. They they were very clear, do not backdate it, date it as of. For what's on this motion? A memorandum of agreement. Make it a motion for a memorandum of agreement between South Carolina Department of Transportation and the city of Pickens. It's been properly moved to second, any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Here she ends. Thank you all for your attention. Um, we gather the comments.
Mr. Mayor, um, just if I were to lead this horse, it would still lie. And um but the um this property, the older property is is it's been a difficult pill for a lot of people. And I and I appreciate the sentence. My whole, my life, I I got into politics, so to speak, because of something very similar, it happened where I didn't do it. And um and I reached out and and stated, you know, my views and whatnot. And in that case, the developer or the homeowners and the community there, they came up and made that work for everyone. Um, but in the end, it was still something we didn't really want. But at the end of the day, it was actually something that really mattered for the neighborhood. We just couldn't see it at the time. Um, it's hard to know how these things are gonna go. It's hard to know. If this is gonna be a wonderful thing or a negative area. Do the best you can, make your plans, try to uncover every block and deal with every issue and uh try to make sure that you you're giving yourself trackability and and but not just make sure that you're giving the best thing you can for for the community and for the area. And I know this is this is tough for some, I know this is not the final final one, but this is, I'll say it now. Again, I'm sorry that it's it it's tough, it's tough, I understand that and I feel like ultimately, this is gonna be not just good for the citizens, it's good for the community, neighbors. Um, it's gonna be a change, it will take some adjustment, I think after that occurs. It will be June. Hi, so Mr.
Yes, sir.
Mayor.
I also agree with that, I, when I for help from my managers here, I I made some statements and I believe that carefully analyzed and and tried to make sure that everything that I asked for was provided. And I think it's a clear statement in uh just so I don't take too much of your time, even as only the first reading. Um, I do believe this will serve the interest of the city, will create capital investment and will provide a meaningful development, council will be able to control, um and and it will serve as a catalyst for economic growth that is controlled and and increase the city's tax base. I think uh again, this, I realize this can go a long ways and I don't I can write. I mean, I, we can just pray that it that all the details are worked out as up till now and all the effort that council has put into this with the DVD and the agreement and, you know, the letter to the water and I think we have there is nothing, I I don't think there's a stone left unturned. If there is, I don't know what it is. I think we have tried very, very hard for almost two years. And um and I I I took this very seriously and I still do. You know, this is, again, this is the first reading and if something came up, you know, our attorney or anyone else on council on something of my attention like this, this isn't gonna work because of this out of the other than that. You know, if they came up and said, no, we need a hundred fifty houses, well, then we can get my vote. I mean, it was a hundred forty-two and it's, it's, I mean, that's, I haven't been watching it that closely, so I just wanted to say, I I know this is tough for some folks, but I really think it's gonna be a really positive wonderful opportunity for our city, for the revenues of our city, for the growth, control growth of our city. And I would have appreciated our mayor and our attorney and and our administrator and Mandy working so hard to get us all this information because we have really really, really tried hard in um and put our, put our thoughts together and talk, I I can't even tell you how many hours now we've spent. I I can't number it, I mean, I mean, every time we've gotten together anywhere, this is our thing, our conversation. And it, I agree with the mayor, it has caused a lot of stress, lots of stress, and that's part of our job, it's part of being elected. It's caused, you know, health issues and all kinds of stuff, it is, because it means it means a lot, you know, we care where people think. We really care and we want to do the right thing for the city, we really want the right thing. So we're, I, so I make this decision with a heart of love and joy and 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 great best wishes and all this will turn out with all the efforts we've put behind this. Um, and I and I hope that we, you know, the folks that we, I talk a lot to, you know, we did we really did try the very best we could. And I think this is gonna be, God willing, to not be great. I I also want to say, my perspective, I just wanted to include that I I I I am very thankful for our administrator. And I know that we had to, uh, we talked about the discipline that but I appreciated him, I appreciated his work, I appreciated watching him grow. He's not perfect, none of us are on this council, but he has he tries too hard and be. To be honest with you, we have remaining men, because he really tries too hard sometimes. And that's, he probably, if I've said anything to him, I like, slow down, Tim, slow down, you know, I know you wanna get this done. And he, he really, he really cares, I mean, he didn't go by, you know, build a, spend an extra three hundred thousand dollars on a house to learn to recover, you know, I mean, because he wants to leave, and he really loved the city. And I, I really enjoyed, appreciated working with him and, uh, and though he's our employee, I mean, he's also my friend and, uh, but I, my employee first, you know, I mean, so I, I will, I will do what I have to do.
That guy goes back.
Yeah, he helped me though, he is, he's done a great job and I really appreciate him. And I really appreciate Mandy too, just all the, and all the effort that you do and all, all the staff in our city, it's just, I really appreciate you guys, but tonight, I know we brought it in and I wanted to just make sure that I include that. I know a lot of things have been said in the city and, and I don't agree with them at all. And, uh, no, he's not perfect, yes, he's, he's gonna make errors and, believe me, council is right on top of all the time. I mean, don't think that, in any, nothing that any of you guys said tonight, we haven't talked about. I mean, we can't talk to you publicly about it, you know, I mean, because, but we have talked about it and we're, we're, we're we're seeking to address these issues through our attorney and do it properly, we can't just die holes, you know, it's, it's very difficult. Sometimes on council, you want to just say, okay, we can hear that, and but you, you can't, you, you gotta, you gotta do things in order and legally. And so everything is, we are, we have talked about it, like, there's nothing that's been said tonight or any time, you know, about annexation or anything else that was shared tonight, that we haven't talked about. And we are aware of it and we are, we are working on good things about it, doing the best we can, so it's not, we're not just sitting back ignoring you. We're not. So anyway, that's, just wanted to share that in my, uh, counseling.
Thank you so much. I wanna add to the thank yous, uh, Caleb, you are handling. I wanna add one more thing. I wanna thank Caleb for stepping in with Donovan. The ones that couldn't be here, our husband Terry had to have hip, total hip replacement surgery. So she's nursing him back to health and I just thank Caleb so much for being here for us. Uh, and attorney, thank you so much. We, it's almost like a person. Oh, no, I didn't, and Ray also is not here, Ray Wilson, Councilman Wilson, he had to be out of town with his wife. She got an award for a commercial to be for the post office. So they're in Texas, right, Dallas, Texas, getting an award, so Pickens is being represented in Dallas, Texas. But I was getting ready to say, as far as a perfect storm, um, we have an attorney that was raised here in Pickens. Uh, so he has invested interest in helping us and I just thank him so much for working so diligently with that, um, development agreement, uh, that really puts the ball in the court. If somebody from out there lives out in that area and said they're making too much noise, we can go out here and say, y'all need to stop the noise at this certain time, they don't.
You promising me that right now?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
As a man, you promising me right now?
Yes, sir.
Any noises, any damage to my property?
Yes, sir.
Creating in front of my road, you promising me right now?
I'll have to just promise you, this is, this is the contract.
Right.
This is the contract.
But it's the better when we do it this way than that way.
Okay, okay, I understand that. But that's what I, I'm saying, that's what the power that we have to be there. And not only since, uh, Miss Palas is doing with that power. And I just thank you so much, attorney, for giving us that opportunity to move forward. Any other, uh, comments you gotta tell?
Well, I have a real long speech here, but.
Go ahead. You got the time?
Now, the only thing I'd like to say, I'd like to, um, really thank the ladies here at City Hall for the last month or two weeks.
Great, that's.
They have put up a lot more stuff they shouldn't have. And I appreciate, I've seen it and I know it's, and all the work it's, Megan was still working as we're getting ready to come over here on something. And so I really appreciate them and to be honest with you, they they're, they're, they're all very good, they, they, they know the heartbeat of this city.
Yes.
They really are, some of us may have done it or something, but they know the heartbeat of this city. And I appreciate that. That's all I can say.
Oh, right, that's a good thing.
I was actually going to say thank you to all of our staff, including our department, so we had a wonderful tour with Jonathan at all of our rec facilities, um, saw some places that we didn't even know we were gonna see and it was wonderful. We live in a beautiful place in beautiful city. Um, I've, I've made my points directly about the annexations, people who contact me. Um, I have been really disheartened by the number of people who have said that I have conflict of interest with this vote. I have sought legal counsel and been assured that I am good to vote on this, so I would like everyone to please be aware of that. And let's be proud of the against, this is a hard decision, it's hard to make these decisions, but we were allowed to do it, so I'm gonna stick it out.
That's true. Okay, any other questions? Oh, you got something?
Uh-huh. I just follow what I was gonna say about directed on hard other parts of the direction, Mr. Johnson. Um, we, we spent some time with him and, and in fact, we spent a lot of time and, and we didn't forget that everything by far of what he's responsible for. Um, and, uh, and I think he's doing a fantastic job of being organized and knowing where he is and where he's trying to go. And, um, and I, and I appreciate all our, all our department head, but just since we lived in the bush recently, um, and I know there are some here that will spend some time with the police department, um, recently and, and, um, for him to be, you know, for sure. How are you driving this person? The person that gets shot at for practice, I don't know why he would do that, but anyways, thanks to those who love, so, but anyways, we've got some challenges for sure with our representation, so he's going down. Talking about those, well, before.
I, and I do want to talk about the specific things I was going to mention tonight, but I think it's perfect for our finance work. And so I've got something regarding my department, if we can please put that out there as well.
Yeah, I'm glad, there's nothing to finance, basically.
And I say thank you to Jonathan too, that was great, everybody there showed, showed some help.
I appreciate that, thank you. Now, I do the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm glad that this time that we adjourned this meeting.
Can I have a second?
Second.
It's probably moved and seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you so much, everybody.